Okay, we're back from recess with the Wycomica County Council February 19th meeting. Next item on the open work session agenda is the Wycomica County strategic plan that Bill McCain has been guiding up to work on over the last couple of months. And it looks like he has a great presentation here. Bill, I'll open the floor to you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cannon. Yeah, over the past year actually going into the, when everyone was campaigning for office and so forth, the idea of a strategic plan came up numerous times as far as a formal strategic plan for Wycomico County. Actually, a lot of our departments do have strategic plans and so in some ways this is a little bit of the tail wagging the dog because really we should have an umbrella strategic plan for the county that our departments are forming their strategic plans to accomplish the county's strategic plan. And so anyhow, as a result of that, we've put some effort into coming up with a base plan that we can work with. I've been working on this along with Ms. Hurley. I gotta thank her quite a bit for putting together the presentation we have today and also a lot of the research that we've done on this. The, and I want to also make clear that, you know, this is a Wycomico County plan. You know, it's not a council plan, it's not an executive plan, it's a Wycomico County plan. You know, it actually says prepared by, you know, maybe that word by should be for, it's really for the county. And, you know, and we've gotten some feedback from the executive office. What this plan is trying to incorporate at this stage of the game is it incorporates the top goals of the executive office. It incorporates goals that we had asked, you know, council members to submit their goals. Some did. Those that have submitted their goals, those are incorporated into this. I mean, some of the goals I think are pretty obvious, but really, you know, it's a starting point to formulate the goals and visions of Wycomico County and laying out the strategies to accomplish those goals and visions and also establishing ways to measure your progress along the way. And you have to keep in mind too that a strategic plan is just that, it's a strategic plan. You know, this isn't a form of legislation or it's not something that you're forced to do year after year or forced to do in your budget. You know, basically your plan is designed to ask that question when you're making decisions, you know, are these decisions attempting to accomplish our strategic plan? You know, to send you in a direction, it's a roadmap, you know, it's a roadmap for the future. Most strategic plans nowadays are, you know, typically a five-year, a long-term strategic plan is typically considered a five-year plan. Actually, in today's world, that's really more of a three-year cycle and they're also usually visited annually. In fact, it's important to visit it on an annual basis because particularly in our role as government, things could change. You know, something, you know, we just heard our discussions we had earlier, but something could change at the state level that gets passed down to us, which changes our position and our goal moving forward on something. So we have to then, you know, be flexible to incorporate that. So, yeah.
Bill, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
You say it's a county plan, not a council plan or a county executive plan. Is this something that you're gonna want voted on and adopted or is this just something that, for a review or?
Yeah, it's not, you know, once again, that's something we can, we can talk about. I mean, if you're asking me that question, I don't think it's something that really has to be necessarily voted on in the end, but that might, you know, other council members might have a different opinion of that. You know, I mean, I think in the end, you know, we just want to come up with something that everyone's, you know, we're not, we're not gonna all agree on every aspect of it, but you know, keep in mind it's a plan, not a, it's not, it's not a law, you know, so whether we wanna make this, you know, something we actually vote on, you know, formally, you know. I'll yield, I'll yield to your, what you all think in terms of best interest there.
No, I mean, you know, with our comp plan, we have to vote on that, that's, that's law.
Right, yeah. And that's required, and that's the thing, the comp plan, that's the difference, that's required by law, you know, this is really a roadmap that we're developing as a county.
And I've looked at this, you know, quite extensively, I see some things that are real interesting in here, you know, but the one thing that kinda jumps out at me when you read this is, you know, our government changes, we could have a different county executive next time, we'd have completely different council. So that's, that was my concern about us locking something in, I guess.
Yeah, 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 we're, maybe to address that last point, you're not locked into anything. In fact, the goal of this, you know, in a lot of ways, our plan is kind of a four-year plan, sort of, 'cause we're, and that's why the timing of this, I think is important is, you know, the sooner we can get a, you know, a plan that everyone has a, some agreement on, it's, you know, like you said, a lot of things change four years, particularly in our local government. So, you know, it's got the four-year cycle most likely is what we're really looking at when it comes to our plan and then, you know, but at the same time, you do wanna visit it every year. What we're gonna do, we're kinda, and we're not gonna go through this today like item by item, I mean, you all can read, you know, the strategies and so forth, but our main objective today is to just sort of introduce this and, you know, give everyone a chance to digest some of the goals and strategies and so forth. And then what we would like to ask is to pass your comments, suggestions and so forth to Ms. Hurley so that we can start incorporating those into a revised version, you know, 'cause it's gonna take several drafts of this to get to something that everyone, you know, feels good about. We do wanna kinda just walk through, walk through it a little bit. Laura, if we can just kinda jump to the, we'll jump through a couple of these slides. You know, some of the first things are just pretty general, generic stuff, you know, the executive summary and, once again, I'm not gonna read through those and how we got to where we are today in terms of our government structure. You know, the mission statement, you know, and we're taking, you know, a lot of this from, you know, some of these things already exist for the county, but you can see there the mission statement and the strategic vision is included, you know, the five core values. This is pretty typical for most strategic plans will have, you know, something similar to this. So, you know, that's a somewhat of, you know, and we can add things or change some wording there, you know, depending on some of the feedback. Starting with goals, and once again, you know, these goals are incorporating what we've been collecting from what we've seen from the executive office, what we've seen from council people's statements, goals for Wycomico County. So we've tried to be as comprehensive as possible, including as many goals as possible. Goal A is responsible management of county budget to ensure sustained physical strength and stability. You know, obviously budget is, and that's probably one reason that's first, obviously budget is a big, you know, and for us as accounts, as council members, you know, probably our biggest responsibility. And so, you know, that's the first one. There are several objectives associated with the, with the budget goal there, as you can see, you know, the four primary objectives, you know, I'll just kinda touch on those real quick, but effective allocation of resources to meet current, future operating capital needs, you know, which is kind of obvious, maintain stable protected reserves, maintain affordable competitive tax levies, you know, we're always sensitive to our tax rate and particularly in a county, you know, we have a revenue cap, you know, we're always sensitive to that. And objective four, procuring lower, the lowest cost goods, services and assets that support county operations. You know, and actually, one thing that comes to my mind right there is probably Laura is adding like lowest cost and efficient goods, just not necessarily just lowest cost, but we want efficiency as well. And then the objectives, Laura, if we go to the next, and I'm not, and I'm not gonna go through each of these objectives, that's something like, say, we'll, you know, we're just asking you all to take the time to spend some time on these objectives and make some comments to Ms. Hurley and we'll, we'll do some massaging of the strategies to accomplish each of the different objectives. But each, then we break down each of, each of the objectives, we break those down to the, you know, the different strategies as to how to accomplish those objectives. And, you know, we'll kinda just maybe go to the next slide as well, Laura, and you'll, you'll start seeing the theme here, you know, for each, each one of these goals, we have the strategies and you, but you have to have performance measures, you gotta be able to measure what you're accomplishing. For some things we do, it's easier said than done, but at the same time, you do need some kind of performance measures to be referencing to see if you're on track to accomplishing your, your goals. And, you know, and we'll probably get more specific, in fact, you know, Wayne, I see you out there in the audience, you know, you can help us a little bit on our debt cover ratios and things of that nature to really state some more specific there. As, right now, we just have a lot of generalities in there, but we do wanna make that more specific. The objective two, which we mentioned earlier, was, you know, maintain stable productive reserves and once again, we have the same kind of structure there, strategies and performance measures to do that. You know, then we have the third objective, which was maintain affordable competitive tax levies, same thing, you know, strategies and performance measures and same thing with the fourth objective of ensuring or procuring the lowest cost efficient goods, services and assets that support the county operation. Let's go to goal B, Laura, if we can. Goal B is responsible management of Salisbury, Washington City, Wycomico Regional Airport. You know, obviously, you know, that's a, you know, a lot of people included the airport in their, in their goal, seeing the airport grow and, you know, become even a larger enterprise operation for our county, you know, the strategies there, you know, you know, and I won't mention too, you know, the airport is another one of our departments in our county that has a very formal, long-term, five-year strategic plan. So, you know, we're incorporating a lot of that into this plan, 'cause they already have one and they have a very good detailed one that they keep very well up to date. And so once again, you know, the airport, we have the strategies and the performance measures for the airport. Like I said, I'm just gonna kinda touch on our different goals. Goal C, we can go to that, Laura, is water and sewer expansion. You know, sewer is a discussion we've had a lot about, you know, the, the, the big areas we're having to address, you know, with our sewer is, you know, how to deal with failing subject systems throughout our county and how to address the idea of future growth in our county and, you know, the different objectives to accomplish that. So once again, we have the objectives there, the strategies to do that and then the performance measures to, to see if we're accomplishing that. Goal D was to provide well-maintained transportation infrastructure, you know, the irony of this is some of the things, you know, that we're talking about here as goals, even though in a relatively short meeting we've had today, we've actually already talked about several of these items, you know, they were, and we heard public comments that are addressing these concerns around these, these items. You know, having well-maintained roadways, well-maintained stormwater drainage and controlled flooding during heavy rain events and that's why we incorporated that, 'cause these are the issues that, you know, people would set as primary objectives, objectives for our county. And then once again, we got strategies and performance measures under goal D. Goal E, we can jump to goal E, there we go, preserving, protecting public safety, you know, obviously, public safety is one of our top priorities in the county, so likewise, you know, we have the, the objectives, the strategies and performance measures around public safety. And then goal F is to have a professional county government workforce, you know, and literally that's come up today in our discussions as well, you know, surrounding, you know, trying to get people hired and fill a lot of these open positions that we have, but you know, we have our strategies there surrounding that along with the performance measures. And then goal G is responsible management of county parks and recreation areas. Once again, our, our park and rec department has a very well-done, long-term strategic plan that, you know, we've incorporated, incorporated that into this, into this document. And then goal H is our county public school system. We listed there as an objective, has had one of the top 10 schools for the state of Maryland that provides continuous learning to students in pre-kindergarten through high school graduation. You know, there's actually performance measures that the state provides to see how you're performing. We're gonna do a little, we're gonna get the board a bit to help us a little bit there is some of the specifics there. There's actually two main measurement criteria that they use for performance and try to get that incorporated into this a little more specific to actually look at those to see how we're, we're doing from a performance standpoint. We actually ranked, we're a little below average in most of the, the two main performance category, but not by much. I mean, to actually get us in the top 10 isn't that big of a stretch. And I kinda mentioned that the word, when it comes to goals, or I mentioned that word stretch, but when it comes to goals and so forth for any strategic plan, you want your goals, you wanna challenge yourself, you know, you don't wanna set goals that are, you know, if, if you're an athlete or a runner, for example, if you wanna run a, Joe, how fast you run a mile?
Depends on the intensity.
Yeah, it's all right, yeah. But if you wanna run a, you know, if you wanna run a seven-minute mile, but you can already run one in seven minutes and five seconds, you don't make your goal to be, I wanna run a seven-minute mile. You know, you, you know, if you wanna run a, if you're running an eight-minute mile, then your goal might be, I wanna run a seven-minute mile. And you can get there, you know, it might be a challenge, but you can get there, but to get there, you've gotta have a, you've gotta have a plan to get yourself there and you've gotta have a strategy and you gotta have a way to measure how you're progressing as you go along. And, you know, that sort of relates to each one of these, each one of these goals that we set for the county. So basically, you know, that was the intent today is introduce this as a first draft of a long-term strategic plan. You know, we've shared this with the executive office, they've given us some feedback, I mean, I know they can give us some more specifics, you know, we've shared it with council members and so what we're asking is to, you know, please provide, you know, some healthy feedback, get your questions and comment suggestions to Ms. Hurley. And what our plan is do is try to incorporate as much of that as possible into a second draft of this and then bring it back to council and then have, you know, some more discussion, you know, once we've been able to get it a little more specific and to address, now that, now that everybody's had a chance to take a look at it. And I guess I'll just end with a comment, you know, there's a quote when it comes to planning, but the quote is, you know, "A failure to plan is a plan to fail." You know, you need a plan and, you know, this is, I think, a good start for, a good start for the county and we've gotten some positive feedback, you know, and already then, and I know several people expressing questions and so forth that we're already starting to incorporate. So, questions?
Any questions? Why don't you put education last, Bill? I mean, I know, I know where you're coming from most of the time.
Try and be fair, yeah, let's say, yeah.
One thing that you didn't put in education that really bothers me, and I had a, Mr. Shanty was today talking about the choices, I had a visit from a kindergarten, not kindergarten, I'm sorry, grade school, elementary school substitute teacher who is discontinuing being a substitute teacher because she's afraid of her safety. And that's something I didn't see in here and I'm not criticizing you for it, don't get me wrong, but this is, seems to be, you know, years ago, I used to hear from teachers about their pay scale and their pay grade, they needed to make more money. Now I hear about from teachers and teachers aides and substitute teachers that they're afraid for their safety, that there's something that's gotta be really addressed in this and, and I hear the excuse that the state controls what they, who they expel, what they won't let them do, what they will let them do. But when you have a teacher who's physically fit and basically tells me that they're not gonna be teaching elementary school anymore because the kids don't know how to act and they're afraid of their safety, that's, that's pretty, that's reaching a pretty low point in our school system.
No, actually, I think, Joe, that's a very good point and I think, and I've seen Ms. Hurley writing as we, as you were speaking, as I was too, 'cause I think definitely that one of our strategies we need to add there is, in fact, the note I was making was like school climate slash safety slash discipline, you know, it needs to be one of the strategies, 'cause that is something we hear time and time again.
I think it needs to be the, discounting, not discounting your plan any, I mean, it's fine, but otherwise, it needs to be put on the top burner for the board to have to try to do something about this.
I agree.
Because you can't, you can't keep putting people's, even going home feeling like they're being threatened or their safety's not there.
No, I think definitely is.
And I have to piggyback on that, when we were meeting with a lot of the teachers during the election, prior to the election, that was one of their biggest concerns.
Yes. Yeah, oh no, I feel like, I agree, no, I agree 100% as you're saying that and I'm looking here, we definitely need to add that under our strategies, you know.
Yeah, it's a really good piece, Bill. This is, excellent job on this, this is a small task and you've covered practically every area I can think of. The, there's some mention of collaboration with the municipalities in the state of Salisbury, maybe add something there as far as the state of Maryland as well, 'cause that just, you know, would make sense.
That's true, yeah.
Yeah, and I don't know whether we want to include anything as far as an initiative on our part to more forcefully address the issue as far as grants are concerned. And I don't know how that gets wrapped up into the other processes, but I think that's where we're really at a shortfall in Wycomico County is that we may not be taking advantage of all the grants and right now, grant, and I may be wrong, I'm not that close with all the departments themselves, but it seems like a lot of it's sort of ad hoc, that certain departments will really stress grants more than others and I don't know if we need a collaborative, collaborative effort on grant funding so that we bring just one person in here that does it for everyone or whether you have to isolate it. So, anyway, that may be part of what we wanna look at and you had touched on in, in goal A, objective three, you had touched about on SWEAD, but the, a real solid commitment on the part of whether or not we, of how we take a position on economic development and branding as a county as well. I don't know if branding's always that great, there are other counties where I've seen they've done a great branding, I mean, and at Mako, they demonstrated a great branding plan. I don't know if it ever really got them any more money and, and outside of there in Visual County, I know I haven't heard much from it since, but whether we wanna focus on branding, I think it's part of what we have to look at and economic development has to be a very high priority, almost a category instead of a subcategory.
Yeah, that's a good point, yeah, in fact, you talk about the issue of branding, yeah, and I don't, yeah, I don't necessarily even like the term myself, branding, but I do like, like identity, I mean, you do need a identity. You know, I think that's always, you know, what are you known for?
Right.
You know, in fact, a lot of times when I think of Wycomico County, you know, I mean, something that we are known for that other people can't match is, or like our recreation opportunities.
Right.
You know, we have some of the largest sporting events in the country, you know, right here in our county, you know, and we have numerous other ones that are very significant, you know, that brings, you know, well, you know, in agriculture, you know.
And that falls under marketing too.
Yeah, yeah, but like I said, that's all part of your market, but you, sometimes, do we market that enough? You know, do we market those, like, like, once again, those recreational opportunities, you know, we got Seagull Century, we got, you know, and now with the Folk Festival added, added to that in terms of just, you know, this, you know, sort of recreation, entertainment events and so forth we have as county, you know, that's something that, you know, Wycomico has that other counties don't have and can't match.
Yeah, which is, which is a great point, 'cause I think the first question, a lot of CEOs and companies that might, may come here, the first question, of course, they ask is schools and the second, the second question, I think, is usually, what is there to do? And what is there to do for my family? And there's a lot to do here.
There's, yeah, there's a lot more to do than I think sometimes, yeah, people do realize, right?
Yeah, social birds.
Yeah, right, right, yeah, we got, like I say, you know, we got minor league baseball stadium, you know, I mean, like I say, it's, it's just, we got it all in this, you know, in one county, so, you know, we got, we got a good story to tell.
Yeah.
You know, sometimes I'm like, you know, are we doing, how good of a job are we telling our story? And so...
The only other thing I had, and then we'll go down here, the only other thing I had was in transportation infrastructure, I think you might just include ferries in there. You talk about roads and bridges and we might as well put ferries, 'cause we're very unique in that aspect.
Yes.
It is a commitment.
John, you mentioned grants and I was wondering if the executive office is considered a full-time grant writer, 'cause when I was on the board of ed, they have a full-time grant writer and she comes to every board meeting and gives an update and the amount of money that she brings in is very significant. I think that would certainly pay for a salary.
What do you think, Wayne?
Yeah, Larry, I think that's an excellent point and an effective grant writer is gonna pay for his or herself. What happens is we do have people in various departments and it's, some departments are much better than others, but what happens with, with, with people who are going after the grants is they also have to get caught up in the day-to-day tasks that face that department. So they may miss a grant or they may miss a deadline. I think this county is large enough and there's enough opportunity that we should have a dedicated grant writer.
Absolutely.
To John's point, I also had the same thought about economic development, that while every aspect of that plan would support economic development, I think we should make a point of investing ourselves in that goal, that we support economic, economic development without sacrificing, if you will, the quality of the community that we have, because there's a, you know, there's a, there's a crossroad there where you begin to lose the rural nature of the county if you go too far with economic development. The other thing that I would mention is that this community over time has become much, much more culturally diverse and I think that we should also include something in the, in the plan that would focus the county against cultural inclusion. I think that should be a real focal point for us.
Good point. Thank you, Wayne.
Thanks, Wayne.
Any other comments? Josh?
I just wanna say, good, great work, this was, it was really nice to be able to see a lot of the small details and things that I had sent be included in here and it really looks like something that we could point to, even if it's never adopted, just the fact that folks are putting in their ideas and we can say, hey, we're, we're a county that despite what you see government, you know, dysfunction on the federal level or anything that may be even said about us on the local level, we have a plan, we are actually working, here's good things that we're doing and that makes everybody feel good and especially at this, you know, this kind of political climate.
Yeah, Joe mentioned something about the poultry industry and the Chesnicks emailed me something, she, they talked about at Taste of Eastern Shore and at the Civic Center, there's a 2019 Poultry Industry University Partnership Summit, it's all day, eight to five and it's free, so they encourage council members to attend to kinda educate themselves on that.
It's interesting, as many people know that we, we sell, buy and sell collectible items at the store and had a fellow call me the other day that had some things from the 1950s and in June of 1953, the governor, I think it was McKellen or something proclaimed, uh...
McKelvy?
McKellen, proclaimed that week Bride Chicken Week. So maybe the council at some point in time, we could honor the poultry industry or the county could with some kind of proclamation, you know, supporting the poultry industry. I know we went through quite an exercise here a couple of years ago, you know, about the poultry industry, so...
That's right.
Anyway, maybe we could do something to honor the poultry industry.
But, you know, and what's kinda interesting, you know, one, one of the main goals of introducing something like this is to provoke, you know, a thought process of things and ironically, we're doing, we are, you know, you know, you know, I think inherently, but I can realize that we're doing that as we sit here, you know, I mean, people were, you know, you know, their thought processes and their suggestions are, that's the whole intent of having something like this, is to, to do that, but then, not only do that, but then to, not to lose that thought, is to take that thought and get it into our plans so that we can incorporate it into it and, and, you know, and try to have a strategy around it.
Well, I will say that I am glad that this isn't a plan that you were wanting to be adopted as a firm set in stone type thing, because that, that, that kind of locks you into some things that you don't know what's gonna happen in the next two, three, four years.
Right, right, it wouldn't be a plan if you did that.
So, you know, locking in, locking in or voting on it was worrying me, it really was.
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah, these aren't rules and regulations. Yeah, yeah, no, yeah, these aren't rules and regulations or legislation we're trying to create, you know, this is, like I say, a plan is something, you know, it has, it has to be flexible, it should be flexible, and, but at the same time, you know, but it should give you a roadmap and a direction. And I'd be remorse, too, if I didn't, once again, thank Laura for, you know, Laura Hurley for her hard work at this, you know, because really, she's the one that's done the, done the hard work, so, you know, we need to thank her, so...
And, and I have to say, we've always had some sort of strategic plan here, but I don't think it's ever been formalized in one package.
Yeah, well, everybody has a plan, and everybody, in their head, they've got an idea.
Like you mentioned, the individual departments, I think it's a great idea, there's some things I don't agree with, a few things, but for the most part, it looks good. For instance, some of the goals and objectives, you mentioned different allied resources that we have, or public safety, or something like that, but you didn't mention them in the measures, so it's something that we could talk about in the future, and maybe, maybe a retreat one day, spend a couple hours on it, be a good idea, and we can all put our heads together.
Yeah, and that's, like I say, in, just in closing, that's what we're asking, you know, the council folks to do, as well as the people on the executive side, is to send your suggestions and, you know, handle our concerns to Ms. Hurley, and we're going to incorporate those, you know, then try to bring this back, you know, either the next, next meeting or a meeting after that, you know, with a, you know, a little more finished product, and, you know, it'll take a few, probably take us a few versions, but, you know, to try to get to a finished product that we can say, okay, you know, we can adopt that, and then we'll, and we'll revisit it again in a year.
Sounds good. When you say adopt it, it goes back to what Joe was asking.
Well, I say adopt it in theory, not in terms of...
And I don't think it would hurt to, to adopt it as a council, I don't think that, as we all know, it's nothing, it is a plan, and I think it's good.
Not necessarily, not, not as legislation or anything, but just as a...
Yeah, the council sort of gives it its blessing, that this is where we want to go with it.
And identifies goals to look at.
Right, yeah.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Let me know, we'll get on the work session, maybe in two weeks or four weeks, whatever you think's going to work best.
Yeah, yeah, we'd like to, I mean, actually, we'd like to do it as soon as we can, only because, you know, it's budget season, you know, and really, you know, that's when you should be looking at your plans the most.
Most of them cost money.
Yeah, maybe, they all cost money, right.
Any other questions, Lamis? We have closed session coming up, just a question from councils, whether you want to do it before or after lunch?
Food's been sitting there 30 minutes.
Entertaining motion to, well, to recess for half an hour.
So moved.
Second.
Always a favor.
Yeah, I don't plan on getting food for you.
See you, gentlemen.
Hey, thank you, guys. Thank you, Wayne.